All right, good evening and welcome everybody to our La Jolla City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 20th. I'd ask you all to stand as Councilman Vila will do our invocation.
Lord, yesterday we celebrated Juneteenth, the second independence of our great country because those previously enslaved people were finally free. We have come a long way as a people. Since then, our interactive lives have been much better. We also thank you, Lord, for all the moisture we have had in the past month and we ask for your continued blessings on our land. We also ask for your guidance as we envision, as a council, a safe flourishing downtown that provides a robust commercial tax base and that we are active stewards of existing, aging infrastructure. Amen.
If you'd stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always a pleasure when we have Ms. Fraker here. Ms. Fraker, if you'd do roll call for me, please.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
McIntyre.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ocha. Vida.
Here.
Pantoja.
Here.
All right, minutes of previous meetings. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Shan is gone tonight, so she will not be with us. All right, citizen participation. For anybody that is not on the agenda, you have five minutes per person and you can step up to that microphone right there. As new as you lose, darling. You're okay, you're okay. And I know a lot of us know you, but you still have to...
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hurd, 1415 Park Avenue. I really wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I want to give a little bit of update on the duck situation. It's been quite traumatic since the theft of Mother Goose. The trying to reintroduce two new ducks to the park has been quite a challenge. We think we're working on that actually, just as, you know, as community members, as concerned citizens. But the thing I want to point out is, just on the way here again tonight, I look in the park, I check on the new ducks in particular every time I go by. Once again, for the, I don't know how many times this week, there was a child who was picking up one of the ducks. The two new ducks are very tame, they are very easy to approach, but I'm concerned that with this continual, I don't know, harassment, with kids not understanding that they're interacting with wildlife and it's not a petting zoo, that somebody's going to get bit, something's going to happen, that will be, you know, again, a problem for the city. So I don't know what the status of the signs are, but I hope that those are soon to be on order. I also noticed that the feeding station has been taken out. I don't know if it was vandalized again and we're just saying, forget it. You know, maybe that's the case. I know there was a problem. I don't know if new cameras have been put up at all in the area. But I just want to say that those of us who really care about the ducks, you know, the ponds, the ducks at the pond, are concerned that a lot of, a lot of kids seem to be allowed to run wild and treat them like they're in a petting zoo. And I just want to encourage all parents out there, if you can't teach your kids how to interact appropriately with wildlife, please take them somewhere else, please keep an eye on them, because I don't know what happens if a child gets bit. I'm sure it's going to be the duck's fault, okay? Also, I want to report that the female duck, one of the new ones, has been laying eggs. And we understand that Fish and Wildlife is going to come and try to attempt to gather those and take them away to incubate them elsewhere, because there's very likely, not a chance, that ducklings would survive in this environment. So that's really, I guess, all I had to say, a little update. And please, you know, if we can, I don't know, maybe we can get some kind of program, you know, with the events that are held at the park, some kind of, you know, with the library or something, with Fish and Wildlife, to educate the community more on the fact that it's not a petting zoo. Most of the other ducks are, you know, they know to stay away. These two new ones, it is, it's really dicey, because they're not even able to get really down into the pond, because the other resident ducks are so territorial. So thank you for your time.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
First, Bill, can you check with Brock on...
I got it.
There's only two ducks that we brought in, because I thought there were more that...
There were, there were originally five. There were three mallard species ducks that eventually ended up at the, somewhere at the community college, and since then, we've lost track of them.
Okay.
So it's only been just the two peaking ducks that were originally residing across the street, I think at 11th and something, in a brick house. They'd actually laid eggs there. She had laid, I think, six eggs there at one point. They abandoned that nest, moved across the street, because we encouraged them to come over, you know, to the park where they're safer. And then she started laying some eggs there. I don't know who contacted Fish and Wildlife, but someone got in touch with them to say, and they said that they'd come out to gather them. I don't, you know, I really don't know. That's hearsay from my part. If there is something that, you know, the city knows about who we contact in these situations, you know, that'd be great, too.
How many more ducks do you think the park could accommodate?
You know, I think at this point, we really don't want to introduce any more, because of the territorial nature. It's just, it's not like you can just say, okay, here you go, like we tried, okay, somebody tried. Nice thing, great thing, get more ducks there to replace them. But because the mother goose, who had been there for almost a decade, there's a pecking order. I mean, that's where the term pecking order comes from. It's from the, you know, from the foul, you know, the foul species, it was a pecking order, and she kept, she kept the order, she kept control. Ever since she was removed, it's been, it's been chaos. I mean, there's, we've basically got, what, two, two, eight, 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 four pairs of ducks, and they're all kind of staying, you know, pretty much in their own area now that we think, you know, the mating season is somewhat slowing down. For a while there, the last few months, up to just a couple of weeks ago, I mean, it was, was kind of terrorizing to watch, you know, what they, what they go through, which is nature, again, you know, doing its thing. But, yeah.
Thank you for what you're doing.
I had a question. On the, to the introduction of the new ducks, how does that process go? Were they tested for avian flu?
That, all, all I know, and again, I'm just a citizen, private citizen, and it's all through just, you know, what we saw occur, all we know is, is three duck, three of the mallards appeared, they then were run off, one peaking duck appeared over and took his place over across the street on Park Avenue, and then they introduced a female, because he was lonely and couldn't get over to the park. So I don't know how it happened. I heard that they were kind of donated, but I don't know that there's a process. And I think that, again, those things should be held, you know, for the professionals to deal with, as opposed to, again, citizens trying to, you know, do good, that's great, but we just, nobody really understood the consequences of, you know, of that approach.
Yeah, I don't know where they came from. I know we had, like, three different people offered ducks, but where those ones came from, I... Darlene, oh, you can tell everyone else your name, too.
Good evening, La Jolla Council. My name is Darlene Durpney. I live at 901 Maple, which is one block from the new park, and that's basically why I'm here. I, I tried to call Rick, but I couldn't reach him, he wasn't in or something. However, we have a lot of traffic on my corner. I live right on the corner. There are trucks going through, there are many pedestrians, some children, without adults with them. Then there are families, mom, dad, and the kids. And I even saw a bus there, school bus, from Los Angeles, going to the park, which is great, but we don't have any stop signs, we don't have any slow signs, we don't have any yield signs, we don't have any speed bumps, we don't have any one-way, and it's really dangerous. Many people do not know how to get to the park. First of all, there's that intersection, so they come driving down, they cross Ninth Street, they see the vacant lot, they look around, where's the park? They back up on a main street. Okay, so they're backing up, and another car's coming this way. So my umwrit request is, we need some signage for protection of our community. And we also need some signs telling people how to get to the park, you know, an arrow or something, so that they know where to turn. Am I making myself clear? Everybody's looking at me like with puzzling in my face.
Mr. Jackson, is the actual parking lot going to be where it is now, or is it going to be elsewhere?
The actual parking lot will be across the arroyo, over by the bathrooms, and a bridge, once that's installed. But for now, we had this discussion yesterday with the street department, he's ordered stop signs and slow signs, and I'll get with Brock, I'm getting some directional signs.
So basically, that's a temporary parking area right now as it stands?
Yes, that's temporary.
So the, the main area of parking will be right off of 10th Street, I believe, in the corner?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So they have to, everybody's going to park on 10th Street and walk across 10th Street to get to the park?
Across, across, they'll park off of 10th Street, where that new bathroom's being built. And there will be a bridge there, trail over to the park.
So everybody's supposed to go over the bridge?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see. Couple of other points I want to make. It's going to be, that's going to be hectic, too. 10th Street is like a mini-highway for La Jolla.
Yes, it is.
So I don't know, I'm not a city planner, so I can't give you the answers, but that sounds kind of precarious to me. Anyway, where they built the manhole on 10th Street, they forgot to level it out. It's a big, when you have to drive over where they were working on the manhole. And we also have right there on 10th Street and Lincoln, a lot of the trees and bushes, everything grow out, so when you're at the stop sign at Lincoln and 10th, you can't see the traffic coming from the east side. You have to pull all the way out into the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Shane at 1421 Park Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the two white ducks that have been dropped off at the park, the female and the male, and that was probably a couple of months ago. First, they dropped off the male, and Susan Dietrich had told me that it was somebody employed at the Jack Perkins dealer, and he did call Brock Hinkhouse and said, I'm bringing him, and Brock Hinkhouse said, do not bring any more ducks to the park. And she's the only female in the whole park, and she's laid 10 eggs now, six over across the street and three in the park. One was stolen. I don't like to reveal the owner. I've talked to the owner across the street, very nice people. And she told me yesterday that the Fish and Wildlife were going to come and get all the eggs, at their place, and then at the park. And one egg was stolen at their place, and that's why, since Friday, Saturday, Sunday, she has not come back to lay on the egg. She's abandoned eggs, because one was stolen. And there's been two stolen now over the park. So hopefully, maybe they can come tomorrow. Haven't come today at 3:00. So they're being fed, and I go every day and give them fresh water, because the, the mother doesn't like to go down to the pond, because of all the mallards attacking her. She's the only female in the park. The mallards have been attacking her, and now she's laid 10 eggs, so she does not like to go down to the pond. So they're so dehydrated, so I give them water in a couple of bowls every day, and clean more fresh water and food, so. So they've been taken care of, so I just wanted to give you that. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation?
I might mention something else. Since we were on the new park area, I have had some constituents talk to me about the bathrooms. Have they opened yet?
No. No, they're not ready yet.
Okay. Do you know when that might be?
I do not know. I can ask, we can ask Brock or Mark.
Because I know I've seen kids try and run across over there, and they're still closed.
They're not, they're not in order yet.
Anything else? Moving on, new business. Mr. Maloff?
I'm so used, I'm so used to the courts having voice-activated microphones. I'm never going to get this straight, but it's on now, right? Holy smokes, look, I'm learning. We have an audit that has been prepared by our auditors and presented, and as part of the normal regulatory process, you have to approve, you, the governing body, have to approve the results of the audit. In this case, with it being a clean audit, that's a pretty easy chore, but if it were a significant impairment within the audit, then that's what allows DOLA and others to know that you are cognizant of the problems and that you're going to do something about it. So to the extent that you have been presented with a, an audit and have that information available, I'd ask you to consider a motion, accepting the audit and approving it for forwarding to the regulatory agencies.
I'll make a motion for that. We approved the audit that was presented two meetings ago, I believe?
No, I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff, you want to explain this AVR-NC appointment?
Twenty years ago, maybe more, there was a consolidation agreement that was entered into between the hospital board at that time, the Menonite Board of Missions, and the city of La Jolla. It was an extremely complicated document. It's about an inch thick. It provides all sorts of details with regard to what could have occurred, what should have occurred, what the ownership issues were. Part of that document does suggest that there are different types of individuals that are maybe, for lack of a better word, target, professional target types that should make up the board. That was not an accident. That was intended that the board be diversified on both a professional and non-professional basis. So as vacancies would occur, the city eventually, but the board initially, needed to take a look at what type of individual they were looking for. Not surprisingly, they didn't mention lawyers, but in terms of accounting backgrounds, thank you for laughing, accounting backgrounds, banking, so forth, that all of those professions were by name designated to be people of interest that they would want. So then there was a couple of different classifications of, of members to the board. One was, who does the hospital want? Second is, who does the city want? And there was a process for how to do that. With all of our boards, as you probably are aware, we've at least initially solicited their recommendations as to who they might want. In this case, AVR-NC did put out a, an invitation and did interview multiple people, and their board, for whatever reason, has recommended that Mr. Jackson be designated to fill an unexpired term. You're not necessarily obligated to ever accept a recommendation from many of our boards, but traditionally, especially if they've gone through the vetting process. And most importantly, with AVR-NC and how they designate, have to designate these certain professions, I think we should lend a strong ear to what their recommendation is, and that recommendation is Mr. Jackson. If you approve of it by motion and vote, then he would be designated to serve in that capacity.
I need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Jackson to the AVR-NC board.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd like to nominate, I think we should put another younger person on there. No offense against Mr. Jackson, but he's been on the board before, and the other person that was mentioned at our last meeting was Dee Leva. She is eminently qualified to be on that board. She's a young gal, and she's got plenty of spunk, and we probably need some new blood on there, so.
Well, I, with all respect, I think the motion's probably out of order. The motion before the, the body is for Mr. Jackson. Now, that vote goes up or goes down. If it goes up, the issue is then moot. If it goes down, then you're free to nominate anybody else that you'd like, but I don't see how there can be a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor. So I think the motion's out of order, with all respect.
You think?
Well, I'm doing my best, Mr. Vila. Okay. I have at least Red Roberts rules order.
I have, too, but he asked for discussion, and that's all I'm saying, trying to sway it.
No, you made a motion, but, okay, if it's a discussion item, that's fine. If it's a friendly motion, as an amendment, I think it's out of order.
If I said motion, I apologize. I didn't mean that.
Go ahead.
But I think we should put some younger people on there, and that understand and work in the health field with all those people, because she does work for the Health Department, and she's, I feel qualified. That's my sentiment.
Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. One no, Mr. Vila, the rest yes. All right, committee and board reports. I don't know, we have at least one.
Okay, today was the utility board meeting, and I'll address your issue first, Mr. D at 10th and Carson. That's going to be there for about another week, the way it is, because they have to wait for the, what they filled it in with to dry, because the ground was saturated. If they rush and fill it too quickly, what will happen is, instead of a concave...
Paul, they can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me? Did you hear me, ma'am?
I understood, thank you very much.
Okay. Another thing, with the utility board, back in February, we were, we asked for and were submitted a cost of service rate design study, and that was presented to the utility board by John A. Krasinski out of JKEC Consulting. I guess the long and short of it, the meat and potatoes of it, was is we did approve a rate increase for the city of La Jolla, which breaks down to the electric fund will be $0.20, water, the three-quarter inch pipe will be $300, excuse me, $3.96. I about filled this all right there. Waste water, $8, sanitation, $15. The typical residential rate increase will be approximately $11.91 a month, so, with the approval of the rate increase. And that information will go out first, not this building, the cycle, but the next.
In the utility bills, yeah?
In the utility bills, so. How was the $11.91 figure again? Yep, I missed that. You want the breakdown of the cost per pipe percentage or by... Was, was that based off an average of households or... That would, no, that was not based on, that was based on the recommendation from the consulting company that we went. So the water design would actually be a 10.1% increase for, this should have been started back in April of '23, but we just discussed it and went back until now, so it's passed now.
Any other committee and board reports?
I happen to be at the utility board meeting also today, and if necessary, they'll take another look at it in six months, but at this point, I would like to make a motion to support the utility board and their decision there today. It was a hard deal, and they stood off as much as they could, and I don't want La Jolla to be another Jackson, Mississippi, where they had tons, and they're still recovering from that. So I'd like to make a motion that we just support the utility board with that.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Jackson, city manager comments?
City manager doesn't have any comments.
Does the assistant city manager have any comments?
We're working as hard as we can with everything we've got. Summertime's finally got here. Remember, we have stage one water restrictions, water after 10 or before 6. Patching.
Just the opposite. Just the opposite.
Oh, yeah, don't water after 10 or before, wait till after 6. Well, see, on the heels of the rainy increase, we need you to use more water.
I have a question for you, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Mosquito truck.
Yes.
Is that out and running?
Yes, it is.
Do they have a route that they do?
They, they go through the streets, one day alleys, and then streets, and I believe it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, they send the truck. And I have actually heard the truck out.
I just wanted that on, on camera, that we have the mosquito.
You can't spray, because the rain diminishes the effectiveness of the, of the spray. So now that it's warmed up, that, that will be very effective on mosquitoes.
Also, at utility board, we talked about, if it's raining, do we get asphalt in to fix puddles?
You know, we order asphalt every Thursday to fix puddles and the big, and depending on staff and the weather, we fix them as just as fast as we can. This last, this last week was weather prohibited, and we didn't have enough crews to do all of what we had planned. But they have planned on doing it this, this week. Of course, now, when it, if it's raining a deluge, like they're calling for on the weather Thursday, that may be put back, because they won't manufacture asphalt when it's raining, because by guidelines, it has to be dry, it has to be over 45 degrees or rising. There's several C-DOT criteria that you have to adhere to.
Last one I have for you, Mr. Jackson. Is it, to your best, to the best of your knowledge, that the, the city has nothing to do with raising money for fireworks?
The city has nothing to do with raising money for the fireworks. That fundraising was turned over from the John Fisher Homes Company to the La Jolla Chamber several years ago.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. I have a question concerning the wastewater plant.
Yes, sir.
We've lost some employees there in the past couple of months or so. What, where are we at as far as a replacement there, and that lead, or is there qualifications for that, or...
There are qualifications for that. The intern, Tom, has hired a operator of record to sign the DMRs. We have two new young men in training, and that, that will continue to operate. We have folks that will be able to pass those certifications and continue that operation. They're doing all right.
Then I also had a conversation with Mr. Arroyo.
Okay. Then I also had a conversation with Mr. Arroyo at the Electric Department today.
Yes.
We had a group of trainees here from other areas doing testing stuff.
Every year, as part of our ARPA membership, they do a pole-top rescue and bucket truck rescue training program. And LaHanta has been the host for that for several years, and our men are the instructors. All of the ARPA member cities send their linemen to that training. Our hats off to the guys. They really are experts in their field. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question as well. I know the Streets Department's been working really hard. There's lots of breaks and stuff here and there. I just was wondering what was going on on 3rd Street as you come into town. I noticed there was a big...
That is a sanitary sewer, not a storm sewer. The others, the Street Department's been working on have been storm sewers. And these things are blastrooms old. And they deteriorate over time. The old vitrified plate breaks and washes out the bricks, deteriorate, and they're gone. Well, this is a sanitary sewer, right there in front of the gas station.
Yes.
And that thing has got about a 10-foot diameter hole underneath that mantle, where it's, where it's deteriorated and has started to infiltrate them. So they're gonna have to, you'll see there's equipment and shoring over there and everything. The contractor is supposed to arrive and get that started here, just post haste. But that's just one out of the three in the series that seem to have trouble.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because I noticed that whole line and...
Yes, that whole line. There's the main line from the west side of town.
Okay. I just didn't know if that interrupted any commerce going into town off of the highway to 3rd Street.
You know, it makes it hard on the big trucks to go and get fuel from the station right there.
Okay.
But they've been managing, and I'm sure that they'll route that traffic the best they can when they're doing the repairs.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Jackson? If not, we'll move on to governing body comments.
Glad, thank you for the library. They were very accommodating and welcoming to our attorneys, a team of 16 that represented Colorado, Oklahoma, and Nebraska. This was the legal services bunch that would tend to the last people. And they were able to, they loved LaHanta, and they loved the people of LaHanta and everybody they interacted with. So thank you to Kimberly and staff at the library for making their visit more pleasurable and just being accommodated.
Any other governing body comments? Not. Well, adjourn this meeting. Thank you for coming out, everybody.
Daniel.